Oh, you want to leave?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. A roll call, are we sure all go on?
Yes.
Did anybody come in yet? And did that gentleman in white come in and say he wanted to be part of it? After we talked about the other one?
I have not heard anything since that night.
Okay. Can I get approval of the agenda, please?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I accept.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
How about approval of the minutes?
I motion to approve the minutes.
Say it.
I accept.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I think at this time, do we have any public comment about anything that's not on the agenda? Okay.
We do not.
Well, I guess we don't have anybody here. Okay. New business, we're gonna discuss the conditional use permit for Wayne's propane over here by say it. And, howdy Joe. What is the corner there? Where do we start? Just we turn it over to Jim?
Yeah, I'll give you everything from my side. And we also have the applicant here. Shay is here today to talk on behalf of his proposal. Answer any additional questions there may be. So, a little background on this. The application was submitted December 31st. I apologize. Nope, just make it all. I usually remember to do that. It was submitted December 31st, 2004. It was deemed complete at the same time. And we've processed it. I reviewed it. Created a staff report here based on the information submitted. I am proposing, right, asking for approval of the conditional use permit. At the end of that, we'll talk about that approval. But I'll go ahead and present what I have and the information I'm aware of. And if I do misspeak on anything, please pipe up and tell me I made a mistake.
Okay, appreciate it.
So, application came in, it's for 205 Big Hampton Street Southeast. You did, this should not be new, a new project to you. They came in about a year ago talking about looking for a variance in the fences. He decided to meet the code, so the fence that he has started to install is good. It's meeting the code and exactly what he said he would do. So, the proposal is, the applicant is wanting to build a propane, is wanting to sell propane tanks out of the area and have a small 280 square foot office building for bookkeeping on the property. So, as I understand it, and again, please, if I misspoke this, we've had a lot of verbal conversations plus the description that's in your packages. So, he'd like to use that as a area to, for applicants to come pick, or excuse me, buyers to come pick up their tanks at that location. Also store a few tanks there so they're ready to be sold. Fully fence it for security, have a small office there for bookkeeping. There's your own folk, your own people would be using it for bookkeeping?
The wife, yes.
Not expected to be public use building. Is that about right?
Yes.
They are looking to hook up the water, or at least there's a water meter there, so water is available to the site. I do not believe you're asking for sewer at this time?
No, sir.
So, you're not looking to add public facilities there?
Nope.
Okay. In generally, that's the application. The reason we're doing a conditional use permit is that use is not an outright use in the core commercial. The core commercial does allow light retail. That use is defined as heavy retail. So, the code allows a conditional use permit to be issued to allow that type of retail to be done in that zoning. And that's what we're here to discuss tonight and offer approval or, basically, we have three things we can do. We can approve it as conditioned, prove it with additional conditions, or table it or deny it, looking for additional information. So, so far, do you have any questions? I can go through the details on here, but I'd just like to get a chance to offer any questions and for you to offer any additional clarifications that I may have missed.
So, if I'm correct, we're on page seven and he meets everything at two, number two, which is the standard can be met and that's the things that we wanna see done? Is that what it's saying?
So, yes, this, I, let me explain that to you. So, we've been going back, not back and forth. He made, he made a, a application with what he wishes to do. And if we looked at a standard application like we've done down Dollar General or the Mini Storage down, we have a few more standards that are required. So, instead, I wanted to facilitate this as quickly and efficiently as we could to get back, get him going on the way if he chooses to. So, where I said conditions can be met, I've added a condition that really, our code requires some landscaping. And it just wasn't addressed on the site plan that was submitted. So, I did, I felt it was more expeditious to condition it and ask for those than to send it back and go back and forth and delay getting it in front of you.
Do you want to be, do you have any questions?
Okay.
Just a matter of making a motion?
Well, I'm prepared to offer some more information or just go, generally, we can look at the site plan and show what's been, what I'm aware of. So, in general, actually Shay, do you wanna, do you wanna walk through what you have on there?
Are you looking at the site plan itself?
Yeah, the drawing you have, that one there. So, this is the one we're looking at right here? I think it's the second or third page from the back.
Okay. So, if you look at it with the chopped out corner onto the right side, the bottom would be the Hampton. So, on the left corner, you'll see that the fence, there's a four-foot fence line right there. We did forget to put the landscaping in there. I remember that conversation that we talked about last time. We forgot to add the trees that we were gonna put on the inside. That was our fault. It's also the reason for the water. We need to keep them alive. So, the building's gonna be there on the left-hand side. It's already sitting there. And then, we're going to have just our loading zone inside the gate, right there to the right. The gate will open in the front, right by the corner of the building in the loading zone to allow vehicles in and out. And then, in the back, it will have, in the alley side, will have the gate on the back corner, back left corner to allow the traffic to leave the property and then go around and hit Big Hampton on Highway. It's fairly simple. We're not putting too much there, other than the tanks just along the side.
Where is the street, if I may?
So, if you're looking at it this way with the chopped out right here?
Right.
Big Hampton's right here.
Okay, so it's on the bottom?
Yes, ma'am.
Right there.
Yeah, that would be Big Hampton.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the structure and the pole are basically the only things there besides the concrete for the fence.
Okay.
But we just kinda put a hold on everything until we can get this figured out.
And I assume you'll have some kind of supportive body or something for yourself to use?
Yes, ma'am.
So, a couple of conditions on here, again, he mentioned landscaping. And landscaping is intended to offer a buffer between the residential areas and the uses that aren't quite as, because we'll have some trucks in there. I'm sure you'll have some backup beepers, ocean requirements in here that we'll hear. So, landscaping helps buffer that from the local residents. Also provides a visual buffer between the two. I know we've got a fence, currently, there's a fence between 203, Big Hampton, and this, so that helps the visual buffer. The backside is the alley. On the east side, we have the real estate office there. And then, up front, we have the main highway. So, it is, it is well buffered from, but we just need the landscaping in there.
Okay.
So, here to answer some questions. I think they're working hard to do, meet our codes. And I still recommend an approval here, just with those couple of conditions.
Therefore, I move that we approve this vote, this proposal.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I must abstain. The conflict of interest of the vote.
I'm not sure you can, I only have two, can't you?
I might do some wiring for him on that site if it gets approved. Am I allowed to say, "I approve it," or do I have to abstain?
Aye.
Does anyone see a conflict if I approve this?
I don't.
I don't see one.
Okay, aye.
You're honest, I appreciate that, so.
I'm not doing it right now, so. Except potentially, I mean, it's hard to do, to do it for free, but I'd say.
It's hard to inhale and goes in my mouth.
I think they're recommending approval. I'll reach out to you the next day or so. Let's talk about how to, to get the right.
Almost the rest of it.
Yep.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that way you can get going on your, move, keep going on your projects.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
So, I had to step out and take a call from Shelley. So, did I miss anything? You can fill me in.
No, actually, they've approved it as conditioned.
Perfect.
Close was 3-0.
Okay.
And we move on to agenda number two.
Okay, beautiful.
Thank you.
You're free to go unless you wanna say anything else.
No, I'm going to my son's soccer game.
Perfect, very appreciate your patience.
Cheryl Turner.
She's out of town again.
What's that?
She was sick last time and then she got out of town tonight. Thank you, ladies. I thought that was gonna take longer and I got nervous and then I saw you pull in as soon as I texted you.
There was this train that was very long.
Yes.
It was like a walking pace, we're like.
Oh, no. It worked out fine, thank you.
You must've come down Center Street then?
We were all, I was in front of it.
Oh, oh, not our train.
Yeah. Well, in front of it. I don't know where the track goes.
Okay, so I guess we're at old business now and comprehensive plan. And ladies, it's on you.
Okay, thank you. Still sick, I'm all in. So, if I, if language fails, we'll lose. Okay, so, we have a lot to talk about tonight. I'm sharing your packets, you can see that things have been moving in the Rainier direction a lot in this last month, both on our side and Gray and Osborne's side. So, I have like seven goals to get through tonight and even if I just touch on the absolute top highlights, I'll take a bunch of time, so I'm gonna, you know, make sure if I can. So, I wanted to talk to you about, last time we presented a work plan, I wanna tell you what work we've done to date and then where we think we're gonna go from here. I wanted to then solicit some feedback, if any, from last time because I said the double. Then, we have completed and turned in drafts for chapters two, three, and four, which are land use, environment, and housing. So, I wanna just skim across the highlights of those and provide you with a homework assignment if you choose. I hope that at the next meeting, Gray and Osborne will agree to show up because they have drafts of the next three chapters, capital, facility, utilities, and transportation.
Yes.
He's here.
No, he's here. But I'm hoping that they'll present.
Oh.
I wish to be silent the next we have. And then, talk about our schedule and priorities going forward. There's a lot that has to be done still on the code side in addition to the comp plan because the Department of Commerce essentially gave us twice as much money as last time and three times the workload. So, it used to be the critical areas was its own thing, it had its own grant, it had its own timeline, they rolled it in. There are a huge amount of legislative changes that happened that they want rolled in all at the same time. For y'all, those need to be done by December 31st, except for the critical areas ordinance, which actually gets another six months into next year. But the grant money ends June 30th. So, we're gonna try and get as much as we possibly can done so we're not impacting your general fund. Okay. So, in terms of work to date, we had said that we had a work plan scheduled that involved getting by the end of February, first drafts of the chapter two land use element and chapter four, the housing element. And then, we would come and talk about them now. We did it. And then, we had, for the April meeting, we had wanted to talk about some zoning code update ordinances, which we're also working on. But instead, Gray and Osborne can talk about their work because they have full formatted, ready-to-go stuff to talk to you about. We have also, we had for May, we were gonna get the critical areas or environmental element done. That's done in here tonight. But we're still working on the critical areas code. There've been really big changes in the law for critical areas ordinances in the last several years. So, the changes that we have to get in there are a lot. It's stuff like references to who, the best available science belongs to whom, you know, and updated versions of documents, those kinds of things. It's a lot of scriptural stuff, but it's chunky. We were looking at the Pierce County Critical Areas Ordinance in there, ordinance ran a hundred pages by itself and underlined strikeout form. Hopefully, you won't have to do that. So, again, and for June, we had had transportation, capital, facilities, and utilities. Gray and Osborne surprised us and got it all done really early. That's really cool. So, then that leaves us getting into June. There are some optional elements that are not paid for by the grant. There are parks and they are economic development. They are also not required under the GMA. We'd like to offer you what you want. We wanna make sure too that we're getting the absolutely necessary critical code ordinances done so that you are not hanging out there with a comp plan that they won't accept because we didn't also get the codes done at the same time. That's the first chunk where I wanted to talk about work plan and work to date and what the schedule is. And then, the next chunk is, we left you with a homework assignment to take a look at the key features that we listed for a year and some of the survey results and other things and ask if there's any feedback on that. It's okay if there's not.
Would you explain one more time?
Sure.
I guess for me, this whole condensed population ADU thing that we have to do?
Yes, I will. Okay. So, that was one of the things I really wanted to make sure we talked about last time. And it's the reason that I printed it out again this time. Why would you save it? I forgot to save it. Okay. So, there are several different pieces of legislative changes that have come through. What is going on in Olympia via Seattle is they want to find a way to house all the people that are going to come at all the income levels that they're meant to come, that they think they're gonna come for office of financial management projections for the most part. And, so they, in the prior rounds, we had to make sure that we could meet our population, housing, and employment allocations. Essentially, the county would work out what its population was supposed to be, divvy that up into cities based on however their methodology is. And every county has a different methodology. And then, they assign targets for employment, housing, and just overall population. And then, we had to show that inside of our existing zoning, we could or could not meet those requirements. We didn't actually have to meet them, we just had to make sure that there was adequate room for those things. And then, they decided, well, we need to add further components to this. We need to densify so that people have denser lots. In Rainier, unlike all of our other smaller clients, you have really high-density zones. So, there is zero problem meeting your housing targets. And in fact, there's likely not a lot of problem meeting your affordable housing targets. And we'll get into this in more detail when we get into individual chapters. But they divided it up by income bands. Zero to 30% of area median income that requires permanent supportive housing versus non-permanent supportive housing. Section eight versus things that are, that are not forever.
Is section eight permanent housing?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's permanent supportive housing.
Okay.
And then, housing that is affordable to people who are making 30% to 50%, 50% to 80%, 80% to 100%, and then not shopingly, nobody seems to have any trouble making 100% to 120%.
Of what?
Area median income.
Okay, okay.
So, all developers will provide you with housing that it will, that people who are making the area median income or more will provide.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's the under the area median income where you get into the specialty situations where you've gotta have housing authorities and you've gotta have other kinds of community development block grants or other subsidy kinds of things to come in there and make it work. But the other thing that the, that the legislature decided was, we could probably provide more of that affordable housing without those subsidies if we were providing denser units, apartment complexes, ADUs, those kinds of things. That essentially, we're looking at the mother-in-law apartments of the world, the student housing of the world. They also provided co-living. It used to be, you know, back when we were out here pioneer mining, that there would be a building that had individual rooms and shared kitchen and bathroom facilities and then like a common room. Now, that's called co-living and we're required to adopt that into our codes that we allow co-living. The other things we have to adopt, access for dwelling units. By far, they are the most controversial with any of the cities that we've worked for or been with. And for good and obvious reasons. The legislature has said, we are changing the way ADUs happen here. And we're changing what you're allowed to do. You must allow at least two ADUs on every property with a primary house. And you can no longer require that that ADU is small. It has to be a minimum of 1,000 square feet. And you can no longer require that the primary owner be on the property. All three can be rentals. And you can no longer require it be attached or detached. It can be both. You can be in the, in the building itself or it can be an outbuilding.
But let's take Rainier, because, and that's all the, that's all the things I was looking at. But let's take Rainier. It has to be predicated on our septic capabilities, right? I mean.
Okay, so, this is how we've done it in our other places. I have, we have one city that has no water. We have one city that has no sewer. And we have another one that has no excuse. They would like, you, the underlying things are that they have to be able to meet your setbacks. And you'd have to be able to be serviced by some variety of utility. So, and they don't like it. Department of Commerce is not happy with us. But Carbonado, in order to allow some subdivision of any kind, because there's no water source and never gonna be another water source, they have a surface water source. There's not gonna be more. They don't even own the land that their municipal wells are on. So, we can't even add to that property that's a lease. And it's a lease that says, "That shall not," with the school district who are really not, not gonna work with us. So, in order to allow any development at all in that town, places where in the comp plan and in the zoning, you could allow 30 units, we got six. Because we're requiring one acre minimum lots in order to allow for that 100-foot well that radius and the required septic that goes with it.
Okay, that's there. So, let's, let's come back here.
Right.
Because I gotta, I've gotta focus it all in here for me to understand that.
And I can do that because I have been reading.
Yeah, good. So, we have a house right here on the corner. Okay? That house has septic system and city supplies water. And let's assume for discussion that, that the city could put two more water units over there and provide them with water service. Are you saying that based on this new regulation, that they could put two ADUs on there with what little area they got for septic, as long as we give them water?
No.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm.
The answer is maybe, probably not.
Okay.
So.
Because of septic?
Because of septic. If they've got a three-bedroom septic system there and they're using three bedrooms worth, they would have to rip out their septic system and get an approval from the county for however many bedrooms they end up with. So, two ADUs is probably, at 1,000 square feet.
Yes.
That could be two bedrooms. And if you got, so, we're, they're limited to what room they have for the septic system that they can use. The vast majority will not rip out an existing decent septic system in order to put in a new septic system to get the extras.
So, we as a community are limited to the septic system capabilities of lots that the buildings are currently on?
Exactly. So, in South Curry, where we are limited similarly, you can't get that extra ADU unless you have enough room to either put a separate septic system or a whole new big septic system. And our minimum lot size there is the county Department of Health's half-acre.
Okay, so then, for the properties in Rainier that are bigger than that house on that corner right there?
Yeah.
We'll talk, are one-acre lots up in Tipsu.
Right.
Okay? The county has a, what is it, half-acre per septic? Is that what it is?
It's generally a half-acre. In most places, it's a half-acre per septic, a full acre if you also need a well.
Okay, so, that septic requirement, county septic requirement still has to be met?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Public health and safety and welfare is still required as well as your setback.
Yes. So, in other words, with this comprehensive plan, we are doing the best we can and we're not really meeting the.
That's exactly right. Okay. We have yet to write a comprehensive plan, but we really are meeting it. Because that's not the type of places we mostly work. You know, if we wanted to do it in a town or the city of somewhere that has all the water and all the sewer they need and can go up to 80 feet, which they did, that'd be a whole other thing.
Okay.
So.
As of April 1st, the county's adopted new standards for septic. It's not gonna be a half-acre anymore, it's gonna be one-acre.
Oh, really?
Oh, good.
So, everything in Tipsu is gonna be affected.
Okay.
And unless we have a parcel that's bigger, it's essentially going to, to make this undoable. We're, the code says we can, but if they can't meet the necessary needs, like even in the small one, if setbacks surround the property infringe, you know, set them or they can't build a minimum of 1,000-square-foot ADU, it's not, that, it can't fit there. It's not allowed.
It's not feasible. Just for the heck of it, I'm wondering. And of course, it's a potential question because there are lots that you could not even put a single septic on because of environmental restrictions that you can ask for a reasonable use exception, so.
No, I understand that, but Department of Ecology is, they're setting up new mandates and new requirements that Department of Health have to approve, which is in conflict with what they're asking us to approve here. They're not talking to each other. So, they're doing heavier standards, and we're doing this and they're not talking to each other.
And we are obviously caught in the middle. We will not be able to do a reasonable use exception for that.
So, we have to allow, under the law, because of taking this legislation under the Nolan and Dolan cases, we cannot take someone's entire ability to build something without buying that property from them. We cannot leave them with, with nothing. Now, some places have, there's like massively varying standards. There's some places that have actually said a reasonable use exception is a recreational use lot, you can stick an RV on it sometimes. Then there are other places like Mason County where a reasonable use for them is a minimum 3,000-square-foot house and garage full footprint. So, yeah, they've encoded that. So, it depends upon how your codes are written. If there is no code, then the sort of standard of law is a house. Now, whether or not you can actually feasibly make a septic tank on it is a whole other question. But our code has to say, we can't take your whole lot because we certainly can't.
So, that's for new construction, but to adding an ADU, the reasonable use exception is probably doesn't apply.
Probably doesn't apply because the single-family house is already there. Yeah. I may hear an examiner as often as I'm applying. I've worked in 33 places as a hearing examiner. Not bad if he wants to be a master of law. Okay, so, there is the 1220 housing affordability, all incomes, that's what we've just talked about. The way that's going to affect Rainier, having now reviewed your zoning code in exquisite detail, is that we will have to update some of your definitions to meet the state definitions of what is permanent affordable housing versus not permanent affordable housing. So, there's some terms of art that have to make it into code. There's not a whole lot else that you all need to do because you already have such high zoning allowances in so many places. And you allow multi-family in so many places that you're already there. It's just a matter of making sure that the definitions line up, which is better than a lot of folks because you've already done the work that others have not done. To get to six dwelling units per acre for other places is the fight of their lives. You guys have zones that go to twenty-five. The practical reality is, is the best you can do is what you just did with the thirty-eight units that chartered, is that you've got this huge chunk of land with nothing on it, and then you've clustered it and got the max that you could with a private septic system in there. So that's, that's the example for you guys going forth, is that, you only have room, maybe, probably not. We'll find out when we hear Rainier's going to talk about the capital. So there's utilities, all this. Then there's missing mill, which requires densification, which you've already done. There's a requirement that we allow existing commercial and mixed-use buildings to become multifamily. So if you've got something out there, and where I'm seeing this, where I saw it in Renton today, is where the office market has fallen apart, just badly since COVID, and has never recovered and is likely to never recover. What they did in the hearing I was presiding today in Renton was they, they wanted to go from a commercial office zone to commercial arterial so that they could get their empty tenant spaces to become retail. They could have just as easily said, if this zone allows for residential of any kind, that space could be retrofitted to residential use. And then the state law would not require us to allow that. Any place where residential is allowed, and almost everyone allows a single-family home somewhere, you, you have to be able to convert over residential while still meeting the building codes. So those still basic health, safety, welfare requirements in the building codes apply. But there can be no limit on how many units that can be outside of what is allowable in the building code. And then they've got that co-living thing where you can also make it into basically studios lacking utility, lacking water, and then allow for common areas.
Dorm room type.
It is dormitory style housing. I think the market would want a bathroom at the minimum, even if you don't have a kitchen. But where we're also seeing that is hotel conversions. So you've got a hotel where it's already got a bathroom and it's basically a bedroom. That's where you get that co-living stuff. I've already covered the accessory dwelling units and I've covered co-living. There's some minimum parking requirements in residential development, but essentially what they're saying is you can't require a seat parking. Most places provide two off, off-street spaces anyway, so it's really difficult to not get that one right. There's a sales tax and use incentives to implement some of these other codes that you can choose or not choose to have. And then the middle housing requires a minimum residential densities. The two are already well and truly exceeding. So, but we have to make sure that those codes, each of these things are reflected in your code. So when we're talking about what our next priorities are for our workload, it's making sure that the codes that are required get updated before we do optional comp plan elements. That's, that's where we're at there. So, yeah, that's, that's the stuff that we're, we're working on right now for, for those codes. And I want to go through two, if you don't mind me moving forward soon, the codes, the, the three new that we put together.
May I just ask, or maybe we'll still talk about that. So how are we going to address the housing for people who make thirty, fifty percent of the?
So, let me get to that. Okay, so I am going to talk. Yeah. That really perverted. Talk about it when I can see it. There's only so much that stays in his head. So, I'll move on to the new, the new chapters that we have put together for this time. I just want to make sure that everyone's doing it, okay? So chapter two of the, of your code, you, oftentimes you write the land use code kind of last. But we were able to, to put it together this time because you can meet your requirements. So I've got some, basically some statistics just to highlight because we're going to kind of fly through it. So the land use, one looks at those buildable lands requirements for housing population and employment. We have a whole other housing chapter, so you've got to get into the finer details of the housing issue in the housing chapter, which is chapter four. I mean, chapter two right now. The middle one is, is environment. But just in terms of some statistics, you have buildable lands allocations that don't actually meet up with the requirements. They did their buildable lands early, and they went from twenty-twenty to twenty-forty at the county level, at the regional planning council level. This comp plan goes to twenty-four to five. Fortunately, you have excess capacity in every zone. What they're not seeing is, of course, the sewer problem. They're not seeing the fact that while you've got it zoned, there's no feasible way to get it happening. That's, thus far, the legislature has not provided us with a, a solution as to how to handle that. I went to bat with the county, sorry, the Commerce last year, not as popular to consult with them as you might hope because I had these same arguments. What do all of these small towns that do not have utility capacity do? And their answer was, so far, make room. And so we're making more. It's the best we can do. And then they have like these five-year periodic reviews, but we here and every other borough of our clients, except for in county, are going to be able to fly underneath that radar because we don't meet much of the thresholds for those things. So they kind of understand that we're small, but reasonable because of this capacity issues. But, so your, and they also, at the, at the regional planning council level, did not do a population allocation. They did it by housing, they did it by employment. They didn't do an actual broad number. I could back capula, at least I'm, let I know of your average household size, but I'm not going to provide Commerce with an opportunity to tell me where my math is at. And it requires some pretty finite analysis, which we figure. So your housing units in twenty-twenty, you had eight hundred and fifty housing units. Your twenty-forty allocation is fourteen-twenty-one. When we get to the housing chapter, we'll explain why you actually didn't meet that anymore. Not inclusive of that, we observe all. Employment targets, and they did estimates. There was a range. Like twenty-twenty, just not really sure how many employment opportunities there are here because it's such a small demographic that the American Community Survey, which is the fine-grained version, couldn't do it. So they had guesstimated, and it's a broad one, that you said somewhere between nine hundred and ten and thirteen hundred and ten jobs in twenty-twenty here in Rainier.
And all that, people miserable, just like.
Right. And, and it's also, especially twenty-twenty was super hard because the cer, the census was terrible. The data, the data quality of the US Census in twenty-twenty is absolutely terrible. There was a big jump COVID, and there's also a big jump lousy administrative work at the US Census. So that's why we're getting these guesstimates that don't make all those things. You're projected to grow by a hundred and sixty units, uh, jobs. You'll notice from nine, ten to thirteen, ten, that's four hundred. So the range of what you actually had is double what they think you need. So somewhere in the neighborhood of ten-seventy to fourteen-seventy jobs coming.
In, in the city of Rainier?
In the city of Rainier. But there's a, the other thing is.
All of our residents, children will be getting employed.
But, think about it too. There's a whole lot of non-traditional jobs out there. She and I both live in our homes, so we don't look like office space. We don't look like retail space. And yet, the jobs are, are listed in our ten ninety-nines as being in our homes. There's kind of a lot of that going on. There's a lot of accountants and lawyers and, and others who are working out of their homes. So fortunately, when they did the buildable lands at the county level, they did a, a rough estimate of how many jobs you have per square foot, both in acreage terms and in terms of buildables, land, building, builders, square foot of building, built space.
Without looking at population?
Well, what they said was, you have this number now, and based on the average square foot per employee of retail, office, and other space you have zoned, there's plenty of room. So as far as the, the regional planning council is concerned, this town has more than enough capacity for those jobs.
Okay.
And more than enough capacity for those houses without the requirement to somehow generate them. And that's the important part. You made space. You guys already had space. You've had space since zoning code was adopted. So you're okay. Just in interesting statistics territory, from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, which was the last time we had a true guess, Rainier grew thirty-two percent in terms of population. During the millennium, the twenty years that they've had, it was sixty-three percent. You guys grew a lot.
Yes.
A whole lot. And they expect that even, even if that rate slows through the month. So that's what, what matters.
Changes in the numbers.
In terms of housing units, in twenty-twenty, and the numbers are all over the map. Twenty-twenty census says maybe it's eight fifty. Well, it's eight fifty in the city limits, then your UGA had another fifty-four. So there were, between the city and its UGA, there's about nine hundred and four housing units. They expect that twenty-fourty-five, and, and so we've got like competing data. We've got the buildable plans data. We've got the county's most recent comprehensive plan update that, that went last month for approval. So there, some of these numbers, I wish they were more solid, but they're not. They're ranges. To fourteen-hundred-and-twenty-one units, your housing units, is the expectation for twenty-fourty-five, which would require you to build five-hundred-and-seventy-one new units. But they think that you actually have capacity for sixteen-hundred-and-seventy, which would leave you an excess capacity of two-hundred-and-forty-nine units in the city limits in twenty-fourty-five. So it's, it's okay. Your housing, it looks like it can happen. And part of that is because the residential six through eight zone and the residential eight through twenty-five zone have so much space for housing. There's, just because you can't build it because there's no septic doesn't mean that you wouldn't welcome it if you got septic. That's how it looks, and that's what, what Commerce is hoping for. And then they looked at the various land uses for Rainier, the most recent data, two thousand and three, because that's their last sub-area joint plan. But your zoning has not really changed appreciatively since two thousand and seven. So in terms of just zone acres, they have changed a whole lot. You've got forty acres of parks, preserves, and open spaces. Natural resources, public and private land is two hundred and twelve. Residential is six hundred, four hundred and sixty-two acres of that. Commercial industrial is about thirty. Your mixed use is only about point two. At the time, the undeveloped land vacancy was about a hundred and thirteen acres, or about twelve percent of land area. But a millennium has happened since then, so that number is now necessarily much, much smaller. But they also looked at total by, by zoning, zone acres. Those medium and high density together are about five hundred, I'm sorry, two, it's kind of a map. It's terrible. Two, eight, two hundred and eighty-two acres or so of, of medium and high density residential, which is why there's, there's room. But you also have commercial, that's another sixty-seven acres. Service commercial is another twenty-two. You've got three, three acres of industrial land that is not developed, but is there. It is more than enough to meet your needs for future housing and future employment. We can prove that in several different ways, just a bit. So one of the things that I would like you to do is to look at the proposed land use goals and policies within each of these chapters. They are an amalgam of several things. They are GMA things that have changed. They are Thurston County Regional Planning Goals and Policies for county-wide planning policies. Some of these have a little bit of Thurston in there. A lot of them are either existing goals and policies that came out of the last comprehensive plan or the joint sub-area plan. So look through them and see if you see anything that was just egregious. Otherwise, it's a kitchen sink kind of a goals and policies because the more you have in there, the more you can then go after grants and say it's, it is, it is implementing our comp plan. And look, policies seven, twelve, and fifteen are the ones that we're going after. So unless you see something in there that you're going, heck no, it's worthwhile to keep them in. All right. That is my discussion of chapter two, land use. And we are, of course, totally happy to accept any kind of comments that you have on that. The next chapter is environment. In the Growth Management Act, the land speaks first, but in compliance, it's the same. So, chapter three is your environment chapter, and it has a relationship to your critical areas ordinance, which we have to update. And like I said, the first county's critical areas ordinance, just their underlying strikeout for all the changes that happened. It's a hundred pages long. But there's not big changes to important things. The buffers didn't really change from things. So where you're already regulating things, for the most part, you're okay. Sometimes they want updated things like best available science. There's new versions of stormwater codes. There's other new versions of, yeah, well, it used to be twenty-twelve, and it's twenty-nineteen, it doesn't. So it's, it's updating references. With respect to your environment chapter, and this is the same from two thousand and four and two thousand and seven, everything we've done in the past, there are wetlands, critical optical recharge areas, frequently flooded areas, geological hazardous areas. And we're required to talk about each of these things, whether you have them or not. I've got a frequently flooded section of Carbonado. There is no wetland and no water source of any kind. And yet, I must have critical areas where it's, there's one word to be found here, a hundred and twelve years after they've, you know, become a city. We'll regulate it. There's nothing in there. There's nothing to regulate on the ground, but it has to be in code. So geologically hazardous areas are erosion-prone areas, landslide hazard areas, and seismic areas. There's also fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, and I've got a section in there for you to pocket gofer because the soil types here matter a lot. We could have just thrown it all together. But they have, because they're endangered species that are very endemic to this area, a very specific subspecies. We highlighted it, but we promise, you promise we'll make that. We're also required to provide climate change mitigation measures in there. I modified those, and all of these really, from the Thurston County goal for their mitigation plan, and I'll talk about it in a minute. Each of these broad categories of critical areas have their own subsection of goals and policies. Again, I'd ask you to look at those subsections, just, just so you're familiar with them and you can see them. There are a limited amount of wetlands within the city limits and the UGA here. There are some. But we have a lot of our optical recharge areas. Probably ninety percent of the city is an extreme optical recharge area. So we have to have goals and policies and critical areas codes that protect that. Things like don't dump oil, that kind of stuff. Septic systems that are regularly inspected and are meeting the Department of Health's requirements. That kind of stuff, critical, um, optical recharge areas. There are also limits on the amount of impervious surface so that we're recharging the aquifer. That is actually the most prominent critical area. There's just a tiny bit of frequently flooded area, you know, the water, the river, the rain, which we'll see over time to come. But it, it, there's not a lot, but there are, there are some. In terms of geologically hazardous areas, wherever you've got a, a flood zone, shockingly, it also erodes. So you can almost match those. There are a couple of places where you've got soils that erode more easily than others. So we have to have some, some requirements for them. They're standard stuff, temporary erosion set of control measures that, that just become part of your approval process, and they're in your critical areas code. Now, like I said, I put a little pocket gofer in there and gave them their own, their own policies based on the, based on the Department of Fish and Wildlife's requirements essentially. Then also, there's the GMA required climate change mitigation. I've got goals and policies there at the end of the chapter, and there's a couple of pages worth. There are strategies from Thurston's County's adopted climate mitigation plan. They're not all the strategies, though. Some, I removed the carbon sequestration and carbon credits. If you want them back in there, let me know. Otherwise, everything that is, that made sense to me, you know, we, we would prefer not to screw up the air and water quality. We do these certain things that it makes sense anyway. They're in there. So if you, you look through them, take a look. And let me know if you find anything in there that you think is, that isn't. And let me know if you find anything in there that you think is, that isn't, could be, or needs, or maybe is too much. But I take a very practical approach because, I mean, I actually have an undergraduate degree that was meant to be about that very work, climate change type work. But there are some things that don't make sense at the scale, and some things that just don't make sense as far as I'm concerned, having spent time looking at the law and this stuff. They're there, though. Commerce will be happy if you've got climate change as an issue, and there are very practical, very good strategies and quite a few in there. Okay? So that's, that's probably, I removed that. But if you want to, Thurston County's Climate Mitigation Plan is available online. You can look at those kinds of strategies. What I did was just take the major categories. It's, if you want to break it down, you can break it down to the fifty pages or so of goals and strategies and policies that they have. What I did was get the highlights, you know, this, this major goal, kind of thing. If you want more fine-grained, please let me know. I can copy these. Okay, housing. The housing element is everybody's hardest element right now because of all that legislation that has gone through, at least for the comp plan. The hardest other portion for us is that critical areas ordinance. The major changes in the GMA and in ecology guidance and those kinds of things. For the comp plan is the housing role, and for the code is in the critical areas code. But we will provide you with draft code in underlying strikeout for each of the things to make sure that you have met each of those requirements. There are Department of Commerce checklists for the critical areas ordinance and for the comp plan. So we know what portions of the state law have changed and where we need to update your code to meet that requirement. So anyway, the housing element is, it's usually the longest element in the comp plan unless utilities grab it. But there are several different overlapping planning requirements that we're paying attention to. They are Growth Management Act, which has been a minute, a lot, since the last comp plan. Recent legislation and those required code changes that we presented just now and also last month. There's the Thurston County-wide planning policies, which are, oh, we've got them in there. There's the buildable lands requirements, and then there's all this new affordability requirements that are now part of the GMA and, and the, it's called, it's called Housing for All Segments of Society. There are also requirements that we analyze racially disparate impacts. So do you have areas where, say you have concentrations of specific minorities who are also living in poverty? Are there areas of historical red light? In looking up the Department of Commerce map, it's got a big map, of where you're likely to have racially disparate impacts, all over in the two GAs, unless there's a low probability for having racially disparate impacts. The housing chapter also goes through the age, you know, age distribution, the race distribution, the other population demographics, which is why your housing element is so long, is because it's still census heavy. This, this town has disparate impacts with relation to income, but not rates, as far as we can tell from the two thousand and twenty data. So again, in terms of buildable lands, you've got plenty of excess capacity for the housing units that you've been assigned at the county level. I also put in a chap, a, a chart on page four dash nine of what your new residential construction was from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-four. Yaliza Financial Management gathers that data every year. I'm in the process of providing that data for the places where I'm a contract planner right now. How many do you grow? So that chapter, or that, that chart, shows that in that, in that ten-year period, you grew a hundred and sixty-seven single-family residential from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-four, and eighty-six multifamily, tractors, probably a chunk of that. You gained three new manufactured homes and one ADU. So for a total of two hundred and fifty-seven new units in the last decade of various types. Commerce likes it when we talk about, you know, you love it.
The ADU's gone.
Oh, it is? Well, that will come in the next round. We'll show you when it disappeared.
Is that yours, Mike?
So, uh, these are net numbers. Some, there have been demolitions as well. So you've got new and then demolitions. So like the three new manufactured homes account for just three new homes. But you also had several that were demolished and became single-family homes. So those go into the single, if you move out of one column and into the other.
We're good. We're good, Jim. Because now I can turn the office into the ADU. I just have my kitchen stove in it. We're good. It's, it's not gone, it's back.
My kids live in my basement, and I've, I've got just the stove to do. The rest is, is there. Right? If I could get the electrician to even just.
Forgot I'm not that old.
Okay.
Still, we can make it legal now.
There's also some affordability stats worth talking about in the housing chapter on four thirteen. We get into who's owning, who's renting, what are their relative percentages, what were vacancies. Again, but this data is from two thousand and twenty-three. It's the American Community Survey data. We took, wherever we could, we took the newest data that we could, and whenever possible, we cashed the widest net. So with your goals and policies, it, it encompasses everything. With your statistics, it's as new as we can get. In terms of affordability, there are housing statistics in here, what your, what your houses are worth. Your median is about four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-three. Because some of them are multifamilies, some of them are mobile homes, some of them are houses. So you've got this, always this, this grouping. The largest number is owner-occupied housing units and mortgages. There were almost five hundred of them, and the greater percentage of those was worth something between two hundred and three hundred thousand. So that's your ACS data. That's, that, actually, that, that category represents sixty percent of the total housing. Manufactured, mobile, maybe? I'd have to travel around and kind of figure it out. Also, we have a sense that of what the monthly mortgage rate was. The median person pays two thousand and twenty-four dollars as their mortgage exclusive of the taxes and insurance. And then there's a percentage. The, the largest percentage of people is based somewhere between two thousand and twenty-four ninety-nine a month, or did, as of the census. Similar kind of rental stuff, your median rental is, was eleven hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month. And I don't know where the finding goes, but my kids would like to know. Because they can't, we both have full-time jobs. And you have to be a couple, it's my son and his wife. Anyway, the total occupied renting units in two thousand and twenty-three, according to the ACS, was only seven-five. So while that rent is very low, the percentage of people who are renting in this town versus owning with a mortgage or without is also very low. I, I wonder if there are a lot of locals here because the average, the most common rent, fifty percent of them will pay about a thousand fifteen million a month. That's, that's what that tells me. The next thing we look at is gross rent as a percentage of household income. It gives us that sense of who's in poverty and who's house poor because they're paying more than thirty or thirty-five percent of their rental income. You all had, thirty-seven people, or fifty-four point four one percent of your entire rental population was spending more than thirty-five percent of their gross annual income on housing, which is a big number. Fortunately, again, we'll get to the housing for all segments of society. At the very least, there should be, there may not be neck and some. Let me go into maintenance costs. Households in need, give you some, like the median household income in two thousand and twenty-three was just shy of a hundred and two thousand dollars per year for the full household. Then we looked at racially disparate impacts. Again, very low risk of displacement based solely on race. Your total population in two thousand and twenty-three was twenty-four hundred and ninety-nine folks. Of that, almost ninety percent were white. Then the next was five percent that are Hispanic or Latino of all races. And then we get, just shy of three percent are American or Alaska native. You've got less than two percent are Asian, less than a percent are Native or Y or other Pacific I-older. And you had no African-Americans at all in the two thousand and twenty-three. Yeah. The median household income was a hundred and one thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars in two thousand and twenty-three, which is way above the Thurston County median of ninety-three, ninety-five. So you guys are, you know, about a hundred and two, and they're, they're about ninety-four. So as a percentage, you guys are doing better. There's not enough data really to determine if there are racially disparate impacts because there are really not enough folks of other races in any kind of concentration to, to make that argument. We can't partially date out with income enough to make that. That's not unusual in places that are under five thousand or even under ten or fifteen thousand. It's not, not, not that rare. Okay. So then, housing all segments of society was house-built twelve-twenty. They changed it GMA to require municipalities to plan to house all segments, which is from zero income up to over a hundred and twenty percent AMI. And if you're looking at your housing chapter, four eight, four dash eighteen, chapter eighteen, or page eighteen of chapter four. Englishmen are not happy together today. Your allocation of new people is five hundred and seventy-one new housing units. Of those, forty-three are supposed to be non-permanent supportive housing, and we will get those definitions in there. There are the in-state code. And a hundred and seven are permanent housing. So you've got a hundred and fifty of your five seventy-one that are, that are supposed to be available, people making thirty percent or less there. Apparently, you've got the thirty to fifty percent nailed, because you don't need any new ones, I suspect. That's the focus that we just talked about. The next largest group is a hundred and sixty-one between half of the area median income or about eighty percent of area median income. Then eighty to a hundred is about forty-four units they'd like. Then a hundred to a hundred and twenty, which is not usually that hard to come up with, is a hundred and three units. And then above a hundred and twenty percent of area median income, they expect you to build another hundred and fourteen units. It is rare for us, in our experience, and we've had several complans now under this new code, to find that, that you actually have an allocation of folks above a hundred and twenty percent of area median income, which suggests that you have adequate housing for more segments of society than most similarly sized and similar situated cities. You're also required to plan for emergency housing in terms of beds, shelter beds, a leather bed. The minimum that I have seen under the Commerce schema, there's like this tool we use, and each county chose their scenarios, there's three scenarios, that they, that they think that's best for them underneath the scenarios. The minimum of seats is five.
What does that mean, Jess?
That means that, and we'll have definitions for emergency housing, emergency shelter beds, but it can go from a full-on homeless shelter that has a certain number of beds down to capacity in your fire department for cots. So that's, most of the places that I am working right now would prefer just to have some roll-away cots, five of them. But other places have actual shelters where you can, you can come and stay for a certain amount of time. I'm not, I'm not sure yet, because I haven't looked at the definition in a little while, that, that drug recovery centers sometimes get, they lumped into that. So where you've got a twenty-four hour, a thirty-six hour, seventy-two hour hold, maximum two weeks kind of situation, might, might meet that definition as well. And what we're trying to do here is pass the wide net in your code of what's allowed, and whether or not we have to meet those is another thing. So that's, that's the language you're using.
Can I ask a question on that one?
I'll do my best, but I'm just ready to meet you.
Just to say we're required to take it, it's based on eleven. Okay. Really, is that, that's about the city providing it, or a developer providing it? Or if, if somebody came, a, a third party came in here and started slamming their hand on the table saying, you don't have these?
So far, we've been required to make it available. You're in the zone, you can have a, a homeless shelter. In the zone, you can have drug recovery, that kind of thing. So far, not been litigated, because it's where I live. We haven't been required to provide, and normally they decided whether that's publicly provided or privately provided. What I'm seeing a lot of is if someone such as Thurston County was to wish to build one of these, we would allow it. Or if someone such as the Truvay, which is a drug recovery emergency center, if they want to put one in, they could. So I did, I did a hearing in fight where they wanted to repurpose an existing building to allow for that seventy-two hour to fourteen day hold for somebody who's in crisis on the street. They're having psychotic breakdowns. They need a break. They need somewhere safe to sit and detox. And they might detox for a day, or they may take two weeks, and then if it's two weeks, they get, get shunted to the next level. But what we've just been saying, we can make space for that.
So if we have this in our comp plan, do we need to pick a zone to allow this in? Or it just needs to be allowed? We have to have a place within our, our city limits to do this?
It has to be by zone. So the zoning code will have to, in your table of uses, there'll be this emergency shelter with then a definition somewhere else, and then we'll have to allow it. Usually with a CUP or an SGP, conditionally used permanent, or a special.
That makes sense. So it's just another allowed use?
Yes. It's adding an allowed use so far. Nobody said we have to build it.
In that context, it makes perfect sense. I just, I was thinking about funding and how it happens and all.
I'll get to that and the barriers after he answers, ask the question.
Does that mean our senior center, which is an emergency shelter, does that count?
It should count.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's what they are. They're, they're there for an emergency.
Right.
But not necessarily the homeless guy on the street going in there.
Right. I, I, at the definitions, make sure that that's enough. But so far, from what I can tell, it's enough. There's that to, it hasn't been litigated. It's really hard. It's hard to tell at this point. And also, the Commerce guidance on those two stuff is missing. So they didn't put middle housing guidance out for eight months after we were already required to deal with it in our code.
Because I can see where Jim's coming from. We've got to figure out the zoning, but if we've already got, quote unquote, an emergency shelter, because there's.
We will still be required to add it into the other zones specifically. But we can also say, and also we already have, you know, so if they come to us. There are barriers that we're required to look at, and they are in this chapter. One of them is the obvious lack of service. One of them is the obvious lack of funds. One of them is a lack of any transit or other kinds of social services except schools, and the fact that there's a lot of critical areas. So there are institutional barriers. There are funding barriers, and there are circumstantial barriers. And we have, we have reviewed those in the code, in the comp plan. And then we'll do, we're required to do in the code, which is adopt those GMA definitions and make sure that these, that they, they are adopted into the use code in a way that shows we've adequately addressed the, the requiring targets. But so far, we've like side, huge side of it in realizing that you don't really have to do a lot of zoning changes. Because to get those, if you have to do a bunch of zoning changes, there's no way that that's even physically possible, given notification and council and planning commission timelines to get them done for grants over. So as soon, that's why I wrote your housing chapter first, and then I went back and looked at employment. And I went like, because it doesn't work. There are a lot of places that have, I've been watching massive rezones go through. The Central Puget Sound was required to have our stuff done by December thirty-first of last year. And I know of many, many, many municipalities that have missed that deadline because they had to redo all of their zoning at the same time. Or you've got the opposite end problem, where you've got the medinism that we're all like, the servants don't live here, and we don't want them to. And they have enough money to fight it long time. You know, they, they, they've got the lawfare on their side. Whereas the rest of us are just trying to get along. So that is, that is chapters two, three, and four. I would ask very much that you take a look at the goals and policies and let me know if there's something that is too bitter to handle. Understand that much of what's in there is to meet GMA requirements. It's to meet your critical areas requirements, new climate change goals requirements, at least. At least we don't have a new climate change element. They're here. You don't have to do that, you just have to wrap it in. So you'll see goals and policies in there. I'll be adding probably goals and policies to the capital facilities or utilities that get those P S E kind of things in there, because they want to do stuff. That kind of add those things to make sure that we're meeting those checklist items for commerce in their critical areas checklist and their comprehensive plan checklist. And they go through this R C W, that W A C, this, 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 and this, and you have to hit every mark, or they won't certify a complment. It's me. So we think now, having been through the gauntlet that is Central Puget Sound, Puget Sound Regional Council, and Department of Ecology, and Commerce from the tribes, and Commerce from Fish and Wildlife, and Department of Archaeology and Restored Preservation. We have, and all of the various stakeholder groups, the Friends of the Foothills, and the Pierce County Conservation, and this, and that, and other, having gone through all of that. What you're benefiting from is the distilled book goals and policies that fit everybody. Now, some of those probably will never be, won't be. But if you come along and decide you want to do some sort of perks grant, and there's like a climate change perks thingy, and you need to say, well, my comp plan promotes it, and in my critical areas code is in fact compliant, you have a chance to get a grant. Which is, is kind of carrot with these things. Again, the next meeting, we're hoping Gray knows more, we'll do much more of the talking. Because ironically, by then, maybe you can actually hear my voice sounds like, yeah, heard it. But they have capital facilities as chapter five, utilities as chapter six, and transportation is chapter seven. The engineering portion is done, the formatting portion is done. I, I only got it this morning, so I haven't looked at it to see if the goals and policies are there yet. I expect that G N O can say that. And then we wanted to talk to you about priorities, because parks element, love them, economic development element, kind of hard. Are not, not required in the G M A because they were never funded under the, under the grant. But they have thrown up these massive code changes with the big critical areas ordinance and all these other development changes. We would like to prioritize trying to get as much of that required work done before we walk back and see whether we have enough room to do the others. We have been moving through at a very fast pace, actually. To get three chapters done in a month is unable for consultants.
And are we trying to get this stuff done under grant money, right?
Yes.
Sure. Then we would want her to do that under grant money, but if you don't want to pay it, we'll do it. No offense.
No, none taken.
Correct.
And not only that, on July first, we start the Grand County Comp Plan, and that's a big one. So we're trying to get as much of your stuff done as we can inside the grant period anyway, because our, we're a two-chick operation. We got big things.
Okay, you say it's not addressed, that we don't have to do it, but you want to do it, and why?
Okay. Because as a professional, I have to give you not a full comp plan. And because you have so many nice parks.
Okay.
Economic development, I'm not as good at that. In the big places, you get another consultant who's super spending, and they do market analysis, and they do square footage analysis, and they do projections and all that stuff. We're not set up for that.
That's okay. We already know what we need out here. Just people to come. That's all that we're talking.
So what is a parks chapter or whatever look like to you? Because basically, our parks are, they are what they are. They're developed and we have no more.
So there's, there's two ways to do it. There's just sort of an inventory of your parks. This is what we got. And it's nice. And then you might throw a little capital facilities money at it. Like we plan in the next year to put in a new park bench or a new, a new toy or, or that kind of thing. Then there's the other R C O certified, the Recreation and Conservation Office certified. Where we go in there and we've got level service standards. So for this many people, we have this many acres of neighborhood park versus regional park versus trail versus little pocket parks. So there's all of these standards of by population, how many of this type of park do you have? Do you have enough acreage for that? And is it filled with stuff? And then it will come with a six and twenty-year plan, the six-year kind of funding, and the twenty-year wish list. And then a discussion of where the funding, we plan to ask the T I B for this, or we plan to ask R C O for that. And so a certified plan is much more likely to be eligible for that R C O money. Because they are already saying, yep, you have, you've, you've jumped our rules. You've inventoried everything that you have there, you've defined levels of service, you've defined deficiencies, you've defined projects to meet those deficiencies, and you've identified funding and timelines. And if you've done all that, then when you go and ask for a preliminary design grant or a construction grant, they can say, you've done this early part, you're more likely to get the points to get the grant. So that's R C O certified. I have one comp plan that's correct. Now we got an R C O certified parks element and several that do not. Because, well, we got a grant for one of them. We made extra money, so we got it done.
Have you seen our current parks?
I have seen what is in the most recent couple of plans. The joints of area plan and other things I've seen those.
Okay. I was just curious.
No, we have, we have, we have scoured everything that is currently available. Every plan you've already had for the last couple of rounds, every ancillary plan that has bearing on it. So the Regional Planning Council, the county itself, all of the state requirements, all the new legislation. We've tried to make sure that we have cast a pretty broad net in terms of gathering data, policies, and everything else. And you'll notice in this version of your comp plan, we didn't create any maps. We don't expect to well, move much. Hope not. But to do this in the amount of grant money was always impossible, both from what the state gave and what they required, and then just the timeline for this town. So we're getting as much of it in as we can and reusing as much information as we can from wherever we can. Trying to be scrappy about it.
Do we need to do anything with parks?
I'm kind of leaning towards no. I would like to.
Yeah, so am I, because of the parks. In reality, we only got two.
Yeah.
Yeah, Gurkey and Wilkowsky down there. And then we got our pickleball courts and our basketball courts.
What about Sportsman's Park right over here?
I didn't forget. Now I've been rolled out two parks.
I would, I would define that as a motorsports park, but sportsman's is for the park.
That counts. That stuff counts. Because you've got these like pocket parks, and then neighborhood scale parks, and then regional parks, and it's special use type of parks, state parks.
In our plan, we got more than just the two.
No, 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 I know that, Jim. I mean, I understand that. But what I'm talking to her about is this whole plan thing. There's only two that the city, Wilkowsky and Gurkey are the two main ones that citizens go to. The, the track over here belongs to the club. And the school, or us mayor may not be able to use that based on whether or not they want to allow us in there.
Although school properties are also included. Anything that you regionally use, it gets included. So school properties get put in there too. As open space areas, we, especially the elementary schools, will define the, the big goal.
Is this a decision that needs to be paid tonight? So we can kind of wait and see for all the rest of our plans?
We have a decline before we get there.
Okay.
We have all these codes that are required.
That's counting the one I went through, so.
Our parks plan was, you know, we had to update a little bit of our parks plan just to get that grant
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
To put the rest courts court in for that money.
Yes.
So we're gonna have to do some type of upgrade if we want to continue to get grants via Thurston County. To what level? I think we have to decide. Whether it's a certified or just a general.
R C O certified at this point is sort of the state gold standard, because they're the ones that give up the most parks money.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is, is there a possibility that any money from the grant that we have for doing this comprehensive plan, that there may be some leftover, or?
We don't know yet.
We don't know.
And how much will? We're working as fast. Hard as we can.
For, I think, a management to make the decision whether to go for that or not, they need to know some numbers.
We'll, we'll do our best.
Yeah.
We are, because we are working on critical areas elements or ordinances in other places. And we're writing these updated codes in other places. We're essentially recycling the work we do from their jail funds as much as we can here so that so that we're writing some boilerplate that we're able to use for you where we can.
We could give a break.
As much as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the reason Gray knows we're called us is because they're used to working with us and doing that kind of thing. We're not particularly good at capitalism.
Right.
We're very good at public service. And we both have another, like I do here in Zandvoort, she's a real estate agent, and a nature reserve. So it allows us to, yeah, active.
So essentially, we will meet again April fifteenth?
Yep.
Okay, and that will be G N O's chapters?
Yep. And we will coordinate with G N O throughout, keep them in.
And once G N O's chapters are complete, then what's our next?
Then we'll be bringing forth a whole bunch of proposed code changes. So we'll move into the critical areas ordinance and development code changes that are required.
And are the code changes things that you or us do, or is that something our attorney does?
We usually do it.
Okay.
I mean.
Because he was working on.
You can ask your attorney to do it if you want to.
No, no, I'd rather him do it. But he was working on something that he sent to us. What was he working on?
He went through all the R C Ws and all the, same thing you've been doing. He just went through and looked at all of the new rules that came up, in his opinion of what was required for the city of Rainier, and just double-checked those.
If you want to forward those to us, that would be very helpful if we're the ones. If he's the ones that will step out of the way and write to you a parks element.
Of, of course.
If he's done work there that would benefit, you know, so that we don't, we're not really going to will ever. We don't, we don't want to recover any ground. We don't want to waste your money and our time.
That's what I was saying. It was the, the recent legislative changes.
Okay.
We've done the same thing for several already, and I've got a part of it right here.
I'm guessing, they've already done that work too. This will just be a media of the minds and double-checking.
Okay.
And we're working off the checklist as well. We're working off the legislative changes and the checklist that Commerce put out that also reflect those legislative pages.
Yep. I think we're, I think we're good, so far.
Okay. So as far as we know, next planning commission, we don't have anything on the agenda besides comp plan?
So far.
Okay.
That might be enough.
So I guess this is when the commission needs to decide if you're going back to six P M meeting or staying at five throughout this process?
That works for us. I don't care.
It was definitely a job, this is a real bad name. Not a book of the block.
Thanks for committing that, Michael.
Any chance that we may have some grant money someplace?
Pay for this parks addition? So the Recreation and Conservation Office has a P R A grant, planning for Recreation something. And they do, they, that money is for planning only. They, they do it like every biennium. And so they had a big round, and that's where we got the one for Carbonator to do their parks plan. But for the other ones that we applied for, we didn't get it partially because there wasn't as much need, the whole town of Carbonator, other than one little park. There is a discussion going on at the state level about whether there's extra money. Looks like there might be a million or a million and a half extra money in that fund. The question is, will they just go down the list of people they said no to last time? And if so, how many people will ask for that, or will they open it up again? You don't know if the money's there. We don't know if they're gonna open it up again. But I do know that that P R A grant is an average two-year grant cycle that comes through the R C O office, and then they, they put out a request. So if you didn't do it now, you might catch it from explaining it. But we don't know the answer to what they're gonna do if they think they have the slush fund they think they do, whether how much that ability is, and then whether they'll just offer it to others. I can say that I had two that didn't make the cut. And if they ask me, I won't ask for the full allocation, the thirty thousand or so, because we created parks elements anyway within the comp plans. What we'd have to do is turn that into that six and twenty-year capital facilities plan. That's the only element that's missing. We went through and gave the level service standards and talked about the deficits. We provided the, the goals and policies, we provided the inventories. What's missing is the, and we're gonna build this at this time with these funds, we hope. So it's missing that basically capital improvement element. So I don't, my side of it, those two places that didn't make the cut would need the whole thing to get there. I don't know how much you need because I would have to hand it off to their respective engineer. I mean, everything a plan can do.
Would they let us at the city, if there shouldn't be, is available? I'm just wondering.
I don't know who's your contact for that. They have not talked to me about it. And I'm hearing from it is Larry Levine for the Green. He's a private, not, he's a nonverbal kind of group, nonprofit, it's four trails. And so he works largely in Pierce County, and most of my towns are in Pierce County, no, but. So I hear from him, he, he gives us sort of updates on what's going on with the parks. And when I find out, of course, I'll, okay, I'll provide it as long as we hear that. But otherwise, somebody just sort of has to ask R C O to key you in when things are going on, when they have a grant to help there.
I get lots of emails about them.
Yeah, usually they send it to us. That's our normal way. If there's not a defined planning person who walked in or a defined engineer who says, put me on your list, it usually goes out to their list, which is general proof.
Yeah.
So you might find out. What I hear about it is that channel legislative discussion is the areas going to. And he just keeps telling me, because he wants to, he wants us to build the rest of the foothills trail. For where it ends now in South Prairie, there's a discontinuous portion that goes up to Buppie. Buppie's done their part. South Prairie, it's up to South Prairie, but as we, those are the easy parts, the top of the plateau and the valley bottom. But everything, the rest of that railroad trail has had a hundred years of erosion and landslides and changing rivers and that kind of thing. So it's engineering mess, lots of big money. We have to then get that there. We're prepared in terms of zone. We've changed our zones, we've put it in the plans. So many figures out how to make the impossible happen. We're ready.
So the homework that the commissioners need to do is look through the goals and policies in each of the chapters provided today?
Yes.
And give feedback if there is any?
If you have any feedback, we'd love to hear it. We want to make sure that we're, we're aligned with what you want. That this comp plan reflects where you want to go. And if you say to us, not this one, then we'll go back and go whack requires.
Okay.
And I'll do that.
Okay. So, and you're prepared to do what you need to do. You guys are gonna work that out for next meeting. Okay. Excellent.
You're good?
I am.
You're all good? Move your jerk?
Move your jerk.
All right, say that.
Aye.
Aye. We're done.